Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the August 11, 2025, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Caputo?
Here.
Mr. McCarr? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Ms. Stroker?
Here.
Ms. Tomich?
Here.
Mr. Bestlove?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item number three on the--
Hold on. Do you need that motion to excuse--
Oh, sorry. Yes.
--Mr. McCarr?
I would like to make a motion to excuse Mr. McCarr and Mr. Beach from the August 11, 2025, ZBA meeting.
And I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Motion passes. Yes. Now on to three.
Okay. Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda for last month's July 14, 2025 agenda?
Nope. Agenda for tonight.
I'm sorry.
You're right.
Agenda for August 11, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Yes.
And then now, approval of the minutes of the July 14, 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for the July 14, 2025 zoning board meeting.
All second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda number five, are there any public comments to items not on the published agenda? And hearing none, we will close public comment. Number six, no old business. Number seven, new business, ZBA case 1436 20711, Kenneway Circle.
All right. Good evening, ZBA members. I hope you're all doing smashing on this fabulous Monday. So tonight before you, we have two cases, the first of which is 1436 at 20711 Kenneway Circle. We do not have the applicant with us tonight, but we do have a representative of the project here, Mr. Heraldo Alvarez. All right. Sweet. So the request before us is to relieve from the 50% of allowable, maximum allowable floor area for accessory buildings per section 46, 170-F. The existing 2,413 square foot single-family home was constructed in 1973. It is on a .732 acre parcel zoned RA. It's just west of Evergreen, north of 13, right there by the school. There is an existing attached garage, which is 719 square feet. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached garage that is 576 square feet. This puts us at a total, a total proposed accessory square footage of 1,295 square feet, which is just exceeding that 50% of the maximum allowable floor area by 89 square feet. I did discuss with both Mr. Alvarez and the property owner, Mr. Cardenas, whether or not they would like to reduce that. And there is a plan actually within the next probably year and a half or so, year to year and a half, to convert the existing attached garage into conditioned living space and utilizing the proposed detached structure as the primary and only garage space available. So just to kind of give us an overview of where we're, you know, where we're at, so here, like I said, just north of 13, this is an aerial overhead shot of the property itself, the garage, as we can see in the plans, would come straight, straight from the current driveway, just offset ever so slightly. Oh, my gosh. Earth-shattering. All right. So it's a little bit better. It does comply with the other setbacks, right? There's the five-foot setback. There are no other variances being requested, nor are there any other variances associated with the property. Let's see. And this gives you-- I mean, it's a typical garage, right? It's gonna, it's gonna mesh well with the existing house, which unfortunately I do not have a current front view of, but I'm sure Mr. Alvarez will be able to kind of speak a little bit more about this. I know he has been involved with the design of this particular project. But that is essentially where we're at today with this request. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this proposed detached
Are there any questions for Ms. Snuck?
Does the garage meet the dimensional requirements if it were the only garage?
Yes. Yes. The only other standard, you know, the size standard is the other one that really trips us up, is the 720 square feet. The proposed structure is 576 square feet, so there, there's even a little bit of room to play with in there. And there are no other accessory buildings on the property, which wouldn't cause any additional hiccups.
Suzanne, I don't know if this is the time, but in your packet, you indicate that there's three available options. Is this the time to discuss them, or should we wait?
We can discuss options.
Because I'm--
Discuss options.
Because it says grant in part. And I find that to choose to, you know, that's an area of discussion, I think. What does that mean? Can there be contingencies put on this with time? Can there be--
If you felt that that was really necessary, I am trying to add a little bit more standard kind of language in here so we can have a pretty holistic approach for all of our zoning board cases, right? There is, and this may not necessarily be the best example, right? We've seen other instances where it may be appropriate to try and dial back some of the other requests. This is a pretty, in terms of requests that we've received recently, this is pretty minimal for what it is, right? So--
Yeah. I feel that we're going to probably talk about options that are enforceable as opposed to non-enforceable. So we'll talk holistically when the time comes?
Sure.
Okay.
And is the amount of variance or requests, just that was 89 square feet or something like that? That was the--
It's the 89 square feet that they needed to meet, that they're over--
Yes.
--with the two buildings inclusive?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
There is-- Yeah, we're good. There is one accessory building on the property. It's a little shed that's about in the same position where they're going to be planting the new garage. And I spoke with the gentleman here, who's the contractor, and he said it's ramshackle, and it's going to be coming down, right? Does it have a concrete foundation?
No. No. It's like a four-by-four.
Yeah. He can, he can answer that question when he comes up to the podium. Do you have any questions for Suzie?
Nope. That's all.
Okay. Then the petitioner's representative would like to come up to the podium. If you can state your name and address, please.
Their address? 27, 2711 Conway Circle.
What, your name?
Gerardo Alvarez, and I'm the general contractor for Mr. Cardenas.
Do you, is there anything you would like to say before we ask our questions?
Well, from my, my understanding, we're only around 100 square foot over, you know, just barely 100. And the other situation with Mr. Cardenas, they don't have a basement for storage. So the house is sitting on a slab, so the main purpose of building this garage is because they have kids, they have, you know, all their play tools, bikes and stuff, and there's no room other than the garage that they're using as a storage as right now. And eventually, he wants to make this garage a living space. And it's hard money-wise to get two big projects at the same time. So we take in consideration that if we build this garage for the family, eventually in the next 18 months or year, he's, we're planning on start working on the actual conversion of the garage to, to part of the house.
May I? Have they contracted you to do the second phase to-- Are you under contract to do the second phase?
No, not yet. Not yet.
Do you have a plan in place?
Well, actually, Mr. Cardenas, he's out of, out of the country right now. He's coming back. In the next couple of weeks, what we're gonna do, he's gonna be meeting with my architect to start talking about this--
Design and budget?
Design and budget and all that stuff, yes.
Okay. No, it makes sense. I understand. Thank you.
Real quick, were there any consideration on potentially making a smaller garage? Is there a reason why you're looking to get the additional, the 576? Is there any way to date 480?
Well, you know what? Me, as a contractor, I can build whatever my customers want to do, right? If, I think the small, the other side that we can build is 24 by 20 or 22 by 22, and we can meet criteria. Reason why they want to do this garage this size is because they do a lot of kayaking, biking and stuff, so there is so much stuff in the house. So they're trying to approach every square foot footage that we can take advantage of it.
So Mr. Alvarez, would, why wouldn't they go even bigger? Is there a restriction for them?
Excuse me?
Why wouldn't they go bigger than, than 576 feet for more storage?
Well, to be honest, no, I don't know.
I know. Is it true that the, the garage proposed is about the same size as the garage they have now?
I think it's smaller.
Hmm?
The garage that we, the proposed garage is smaller than the existing, than the existing garage.
Okay.
And that's why, that's one of the reasons why they want to take advantage of this square footage on the existing garage to convert it as a part of the house, because it's a real good square footage, you know, and it's actually attached to the house. So when they're gonna get a project that is already extending as a part of the dwelling, the expectation of spending the money will be same as build a new attached dwelling on the house, which is expensive than to build just a garage.
Can you say more about the shed that was previously asked about?
The, the little, that's gonna, that's gonna, we're gonna take it down once we start working on, on the garage. And it's actually on the, I mean, you can barely see it on the picture. It's like a four-by-four, just for, for a lawnmower.
You blow that up a little bit?
This thing?
No, right, right behind, behind the garage.
Oh, this little, this little thing?
Yeah.
But what are we seeing to the right?
Yeah.
What is the--
Oh, that's just, I think it's a compass or something. I don't know what's underneath.
Okay.
I don't know that, what this is supposed to be right now.
Could be a car.
That might be a car.
I mean--
The one in front of it does a car. That, that, I remember it's a compass covering something.
Suzie, can you go over the other options, please?
The other options in turn, I mean, right now, I mean, you could certainly, you can approve a grant as, as proposed. You could deny. Deny and hold if you'd like. You could, as we've done with other requests, we could grant it upon the condition, well, you could request it to, you can grant it on the condition that it is reduced in size. I don't necessarily know if that's appropriate. Like, I mean, I think, you know, we've had, we've had other cases before us, right, where they've been relatively, fairly large garages, right? And we've asked those applicants to reduce the size and scope, right? So I think, really, I think for, for this particular project, you know, I think, I think the best options would be either to grant or deny. There may not be the best case to approve in part, but, and then we just need to have the public hearing. Right?
We should discuss this.
Do you have anything else?
No. I just take in consideration that it's only 100 square foot that we're talking about here, to make a family happy, you know?
Is there any other discussion by the board?
Are we in board discussion, or are we--
Not.
Or just with, yeah.
Not with the candidate. Okay. You can take his seat.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make-- My comments, I--
One moment. We do need to open the public, open the public hearing and then allow for any public comment and then board discussion.
Okay. Sorry.
Yep.
Is there any public comment on this matter?
I did not receive any comments written or otherwise.
Okay. Hearing none. Board discussion?
Well, my concern originally was that propose, or granting with the contingency that the plan be followed is not enforceable, right? So meaning that, and giving this family two years to say, complete their project doesn't seem like it's a enforceable contingency, which means that, you know, just having a non-contingent grant or deny would be more suitable to this case.
I guess I'm not understanding why you, there, this would be, we could, I guess I'm not understanding where you're coming from, because this could be, the conversion of the living space doesn't necessarily have to be, that wouldn't necessarily have to be a requirement, I guess.
That's right. That's what I'm, that is exactly what I'm talking about. Because making it a requirement is--
Unenforceable.
Unenforceable.
Correct. No. I, I, I guess I was, I don't know, I had other thoughts or, or non-thoughts, as the case may be, but, no, we wouldn't necessarily have to, this board could certainly approve this, this variance request without making any sort of commentary really on the existing garage. That's just an interesting, it's a good bit of information, I think, for this board to--
But what is enforceable is we made the contingency that that shed in the back be removed.
Yes.
And I think that that, that needs to be in whatever piece we have.
Yes. Yep. You covered it.
All right. Sorry. Yeah, personally, I see no reason to, to not grant the request. It is a small variance and, and regardless of their plan for the future, I think it stands on its own.
Is there any more discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I have a question, and I apologize for not knowing this off the top of my head, but does the code prevent more than one garage?
Or no?
Just the accessories?
It's the two accessory buildings.
Okay.
So therefore, if they, they go ahead, they make the garage and they swap out that living space, then they're one accessory building, allowing them to go forward in the future with the second accessory building.
Correct.
Right.
They could put up a whole new shed.
Yeah. So we're not here to quibble about what could happen in the future.
Correct.
I think it stands on its own.
You want to make a motion?
I'm preparing to right now.
Okay.
Anything? All right. So, Madam Chairman, I move to grant the variance request by Leandro Cardenas, property owner of 27, 2711 Kenneway Circle, parcel 2403452010, ZBA case 1436, from chapter 46 zoning, section 46-170F, to exceed the maximum total allowable floor area for accessory buildings. This determination was based on the findings that the petitioner has demonstrated a practical difficulty exists based on the following criteria. Applying the strict letter of the zoning restriction will unreasonably prevent the landlord from using their property for a permitted purposing or conformity with the zoning regulation is, in this case, unnecessarily burdensome because it would require that there, a redesign and a reduction in their size of their space. Two, substantial justice would be achieved for the applicant and neighboring property owners by granting the variance, and approval of the variance would not negatively impact adjacent property owners or land within the district because no one stepped forth to oppose it. Three, the request that variance is the least relief required. Four, the situation is unique to the subject property and not related to the general conditions of the area. And five, the circumstances requiring the variance are not self-created. Approval of the variance request is, however, conditioned upon compliance with the following conditions, that the shed in the rear of the property be removed at a, at the time of the proposed garage.
Do I hear a second?
A second. The motion to approve.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Stroker?
Yes.
Ms. Tomich?
Yes.
Mr. Bestlove?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
And Ms. Caputo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll follow up with you in the morning. Feel free to enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right. We will now move on to ZBA case number 1437 at 3155 Southfield Road.
All right. So our second case of the evening is for a additional sign, sign copy at our, one of our newest businesses. I think you might actually still be the newest business, Paddle &amp; Par. If you guys have not been there, shame on you. It's amazing.
I peeked in the windows.
Right. You should do more than peek in the windows. You should go, you should play, dine, you should drink. It's a really fantastic job that they've done. So, but that's, that's, you're welcome. I'm walking commercials.
Very biased.
You know, just shame you all into going and enjoying your businesses. So we've, so we, they've been open now for, oh, gosh, five months. All right. So we're almost there, right? We're almost a full half a year. And you, some of you may recall, this is not the first time Paddle &amp; Par has come before us. You may recall back in October of last year, they requested and received a variance to install Paddle &amp; Par above the south, above the entrance on the south facade. So they currently have that sign, they have the wall sign facing Southfield Road, as well as their monument sign. They have, they came before Planning Commission, gosh, was that, was that last, two weeks ago? Last week? These are kind of blurring together. Sorry. They did come before Planning Commission at their July meeting, requesting approval to modify their monument sign, as well as get feedback and, I mean, they did get conditional approval on additional wall sign copy. They have discovered that they're missing a bit of their market, right? There's some kind of misunderstanding by clients and potential clients that are patrons, however you want to term them, that they're a private club, and this is not the case. They're not a private club. They are open to the general public, and we want to make sure that the general public is well aware of this. So Planning Commission did approve modification to the monument sign to add kitchen and, kitchen and bar as a, as a little band on the bottom. I did not include that rendering. And then Planning Commission also gave conditional approval to add this additional wall copy here. Pickleball, golf, kitchen and bar. Whoops. This is, flows with their, their color palette already. This is navy blue. It was an additional 49 square feet of signage space. This is, oh, gosh, I did the math. It is 100, if approved by the, by this board this evening, this would represent a total square footage of 148 and a half square feet of wall signage. They do get, because of the size of their building, which is in excess of 15,000 square feet, they do get, or 12,000 square feet, I'm sorry, they do get 60 feet of, of wall signage, right? So that allowance is already built into, into the zoning ordinance. So the addition of, of this wall copy would be, would exceed the allowable square footage by 88 and a half square feet. So we are here before you, or there here before you'd ask for variance to add 49 square feet of wall signage. It should be noted that Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that was the previous tenant, they also had three wall signs and a monument sign. That doesn't necessarily faze me, but it is something, I guess, to keep in the back of your mind. They do have representatives from Paddle &amp; Par here, as well as from the sign company, and I'm sure that they can fill you in on anything I may have missed. But I am happy to ask any questions that this board may have or answer.
Any other questions?
So Suzie, the Planning Commission?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, are you summarizing, or is there like a meeting notes that we should be looking at, or?
I've summarized their comments. We don't, we don't have their, we don't have the draft minutes.
Obviously, you were there, right?
Yes, I was there.
I'm sure it wasn't a heated discussion or anything, right?
It was not a heated discussion. It was a, but they, I mean, they had, they were actually quite happy to add their thoughts to this. It was a, but they, I mean, they had, they were actually quite happy to add their thoughts to this. And overall, and this is not the first design, I will say, that I've seen. And the applicants really, they tried hard to find a way to make this fit, make this copy fit. We've seen, you know, I think there was a different band where it was blue with a white. And, you know, they tried to kind of smoosh it underneath Paddle &amp; Par so we could get it, you know, to like, because the way the Planning Commission, the way we do the calculation, right, is you just take the rectangle and you calculate the square footage within that. That didn't, that didn't look good. In fact, when we tried to smash it together to, you know, make it one sign, I think that was like, I think that was the nail in the coffin for do we go to the ZBA or not go to the ZBA? It just looked very cluttered. So, the Planning Commission actually felt that this was a pretty good, it really flows with their aesthetic overall, draws out the line of the building and really fits to scale. It's a nice clean line. There is.
Oh, there's no doubt, yeah.
There's no.
The question, the questions I had in the Commission, the Planning Commission, meaning was there, is there an allowance for temporary signage? Or there's, I don't know what those ordinance are or.
There are, temporary signage is allowed in very limited, for very limited periods of time and in very limited circumstances.
Yeah, it's not like we want to have those blow up things.
No, that's a prohibited sign, the wavy guy's prohibited signs are animated. Those are not quite, yeah, it's totally different vibe from what they would ever go for.
I was going to say, I don't like the vibe of open to the public sign, you know? I don't think that's something that they probably want with their brand either, but.
No, right? And the, like, the wavy guy, that's a prohibited sign. Temporary signage, I mean, even different project, but the market fresh. The banners that those businesses have, that's not even an allowable temporary sign type, right? Temporary signs are really meant to be for like grand openings or special events. So, Planning Commission, for those, you know, those signs for those businesses under construction, that was, you know, that was a special, it was kind of a special
Okay.
sign flex, if you will, and something that we're going to be addressing. So, temporary signage wouldn't work for what Paddle &amp; Par is trying to achieve at this point.
So, are we asked to approve the third sign and the size of the third sign?
You are being asked to approve the installation of this third wall sign. Planning Commission has already said that if this body chooses to approve the sign, then the applicant can move forward with the sign as presented and pull their permits so they don't have to go back. Now, when we were talking, when you asked earlier, Mr. Baron, about, you know, granting in whole and part or whatever, you know, we are always constantly trying to find the lesser variance, right? So, one thing you may want to consider is whether or not you, like, if you're feeling, whether or not you want to leave, right? Say, yeah, we like this, but maybe do they need the sign on the south-facing wall? Is there something, you know, do they need that? Do you want, I mean, do you want them to allow them to keep it? They could write, they could have an entrance sign. But they've also already received the variance. So, these are just kind of things to mull over and consider.
So, I think what my colleague was saying is that what we're discerning here is a variance for the 60% over.
Yep.
Right, and nothing else.
Correct.
We're not, we're not going to be interior designers. We're not going to talk about font or colors or anything of that nature.
Correct.
I'm so glad.
And Susie, just from my education, so if we decided to approve this, would we have to adopt what Planning Commission has already done in our motion? Or are those two separate and distinct?
I would say those are two separate and distinct, but I would reference the plans, right? As, you know, the motion could say, you know, to approve plans as presented and that have, and which have received conditional approval by the Planning Commission on, you know, at their July 27th meeting.
Are there any other questions for Susie? If the petitioner wants to approach the podium, then state your name and address, please.
Michael Hayner, 31535 Southfield Road is Paddle &amp; Par's address.
Michael, right?
Yes.
Is this, are you a part of a franchise or a franchise operation or this is?
We are not. We are one of one.
One of one.
Yes.
So you have no standards that you're applying here? You're creating your own?
Very high standards, but yes, we are creating our own.
Just wanted to make sure that was true.
Personally creating them, actually, yes. Glad you like the site.
No, it's, it's better than open to the public.
Think so.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit more about just the issue or the concern that is leading to the necessity of this sign?
Yeah, we have, because we're an elevated club, social club, pickleball, golf, table tennis, but we do have this kind of stigma, I guess, in the public that people kind of feel like we are a members-only club. Although we do have memberships, we offer memberships, we are open to the public.
Yes.
So, we.
Going to go for a while.
We're trying to break that through marketing. We do a lot in, on Instagram and Facebook and with newsletters to let people know. But it's still, it's been an uphill battle. And even though the summer, you know, months are going to be inherently slower for us because we're an indoor facility, this is like really, because we're new, we're really just trying to let as many people know as quickly as possible that we are open to the public. We've talked about this. I think in hindsight, we would have come before you with this originally. But here we are. And we think this is like, to your point, this is the most tasteful way that we can do that. There's a lot of traffic, as you all know, on Southfield Road. A lot of people drive by. Paddle &amp; Par, even the name, even though it describes paddles or pickleball and par is golf, it's not really on the nose. So, we're really just trying to be as clear as possible. And the kitchen and bar piece is really crucial because that really says you can just come in and you don't have to be a member. So, that's the thought process.
I picked that up. I just think it's a unique situation. There's no franchise or, you know, dealing with it, we're, this is, we're a small town with very few commercial spaces. This is, this is where strict enforcement of variances need to be understood, what they do.
Understood.
Because we did not, I don't think that the Planning, if the Planning Commission brought this up, it means that we never considered this. And we, I think we support our businesses, everyone at this table.
It's clear that you do. It's been nothing but a pleasure to work with the village and the Commission. You know, and although we have an allotted sign, you know, square footage allowance based on being a larger building, 12,000 square feet, or actually 48,000 square feet. So, it is a very big white building, so this little bit more would go a really long way for us.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner?
Is there signage on the, was it the south side of it, too?
We have, so the Paddle &amp; Par sign that you see here, we have.
There's one on the other side, right?
We do, yeah, which is our main entrance. It's the only entrance.
Okay.
So, to Susie's point, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond had a sign here, they had a sign.
On the side.
On the south side, and they also had one in the back.
Okay.
Because there was like a dual entrance.
Yep.
Back there in addition to their monument sign.
So, is that all-inclusive of why you're over your signage, is having the back, the?
We don't have the back.
So, just the side and the front?
Exactly, yeah.
And is there no longer an entrance on that back part or there is?
Correct, yep, no longer. And I promise I won't come back and ask for another sign.
Don't promise.
Be careful. I'll pick him out before that happens.
Yeah, exactly. Susie would talk me out of it.
Anything else for the petitioner? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comment. Susie, did we receive anything?
We did not. We had one, we had one neighboring business inquire, but there was, nothing came of it, right? And that was it. There was no other comments.
Okay, and hearing none from the public here, we will close public comment. Any additional comments from the board?
Well, my comment is, I mean, this is, it's not about accepting it. I'm struggling with how to create a motion under these circumstances.
I think you've already framed some of it.
But, so we don't have to, we don't have to include Planning Commission's findings in our motions?
Not if you don't want to, no. You could, if you would like to, if you would like to, though, since I'm getting the sense that you would. I would say, we're proving, right? That's where you're going with this?
I'm just, okay, yes.
There's no need to be coy. We're fine, we're good. So, I would say, as you've already indicated, so under, let's see, they have some.
We just read it as it is. There's no contingencies. I read the last one, why don't you do this one?
I have a question.
Okay, good, okay.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'll just, to support approval, the building size is four times the 12,000 square feet, you know, for the 60 square foot requirement. And this is, you know, pretty proportionate given the size of the building, even though.
Excellent.
They're getting an additional sign, which the Planning Commission already approved.
Correct, the Planning Commission already approved. Does fit with, as they summarized in their comments, right? Like, the sign itself, what is being proposed, it does conform with the design standards and the overall aesthetic that the sign standards are going for, right? That's what we're trying to promote. So, they're in line with that. This is a way that granting this variance, this is a way that we can support, further support the small businesses in our community, even if they have ginormous buildings, right? Small businesses, giant buildings. But this, you know, so this would, I would, if I were you, I would be referencing some of those elements within this, right? The strict, applying the strict letter.
Right.
Pointing out the space requirements that Ms. Tomich just brought up. To me, that is something that is unique to the property, right? It would, it would also, and Mr. Baron, as you pointed out as well, you know, not being a franchise, you know, they don't have, although the.
A brand standard.
You know, they don't have a brand standard to fall back on or, you know, and they're really trying to capture that audience, right?
Yeah, just trying to frame it in the, in the language of the motion. We don't have to cover all five points, do we?
It is best practice to try and cover all five points, but if you can't, you can't, right? I mean, you can.
How much oxygen I can give you? You know, unless somebody else would jump in there anytime. I would be more than happy to give it a try. Like before, I, you know, might have to redact it and try again, right?
That's all right, we can wordsmash it together. We've done it before.
Anyone, anyone? All right, let me give it a try. Madam Chairman, I move to grant the variance request by Neil Check, business owner of Paddle &amp; Par located at 31535 Southfield Road, Plot 2402427009, 10 and 11, from Chapter 46 zoning, Section 46-433 District Regulations Permanent Business Address Standards, to allow for the installation of 49 square feet of additional wall sign copy on the east facade. This determination was based on the finding that the petitioner has, in fact, demonstrated a practical difficulty exists based on the following criteria. One, applying the strict letter of the zoning restrictions will unreasonably prevent the landowner from using their property for a permitted purpose and/or conformity with the zoning regulations is unnecessarily burdensome because the size of the property is four times the noted 12,000 feet in the ordinance. Two, substantial justice would be achieved for the applicant and neighboring property owners by granting the variance and approval of the variance would not negatively impact adjacent property owners or land within the district because no property owner has weighed in or found a complaint against this variance. The requested variance is, in fact, the least relief required based on the testimony of our petitioner. The situation is unique to the subject property and not related to the general conditions of the area. There is no similar property in Beverly Hills. The situation requiring the variance is not self-created and the Beverly Hills Planning Commission has also ruled in favor of this motion or this request. And there are, the approval of variance is not conditioned upon any other elements. How does that work?
I think that's passable.
I don't know, I've screwed up before.
I'm not going to hold that one against you. I think that's all right.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Stroker?
Yes.
Ms. Tomich?
Yes.
Mr. Bestlove?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Ms. Caputo?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I was going to tell you to put in there none of these.
We need you to succeed. Let us know if there's anything else we can do for you.
Go to their business. Have pizza, the mushroom pizza is fantastic.
I'll be the charge of that.
Fantastic.
They just need a daycare there.
Sounds like bribery and amusement.
I'm not buying, so it's not bribery. I'll see you guys soon. I will definitely call you guys down. Have a good one.
That sign was humongous.
That sign was humongous.
That sign was ridiculously big. The Bed Bath &amp; Beyond sign?
Oh, I know that.
And I remember they had a third one on the other side.
I know.
Yeah, that looks baby compared to.
All right. We have finished with new business. Moving on to public comment, seeing and hearing none. Liaison comments?
Good evening, everyone. I don't really have anything to report back from council to y'all, but just Ms. Roth, lovely job this evening. I always, when I was on zoning or on planning and I had to take the helm of the chair role, I always equated it to like, to driving, right? You sit in shotgun of a car for 10 years of your life and then you get behind the wheel that first time and you have no idea what the heck to do, right? You hold the steering wheel too long, you go too, yeah, it's tough, so nice work tonight.
Thank you. I didn't get a driver's license till I was three, three, so.
Right, so you had to edge your 20 years. Right, so you had, had your twenty years, twenty years of sitting next to the driver, right?
That's scary.
And also, welcome the newest member here, Mr. Bislove. Thank you for your commitment to the community here. Anything for me?
There's nothing to report, but all that's going on, there's nothing that you can tell us.
I mean, there's a lot of talk about chickens, yeah.
Parks, there's chickens, there's lizards, I don't-
Sure, a lot of talk about chickens at each meeting, the first usual hour, forty-five minutes is about chickens, but-
What about parks, the parks updates? I mean, that's-
Sure, well, I can, maybe I'll let you do that one.
Oh, come on, take it away, I can, I can, I can fill in where you maybe don't, how's that?
We have renovations going, planning for Beverly, right?
Yeah, the, there is new playground equipment that is still pending MDNR approval, though, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the, we're still waiting on the process that we have to go through to be able to put that equipment in with the DNR right now. But we're hoping that's going to come up pretty soon, and then we'll be able to move that forward here before the year ends. And then, the new park is, again, like, we've completed the whole transaction of it, it is now the village's property, it's been commissioned, it has its official sign, people are free to go use it, it's much more like a natural setting right now. I think we're going to go after some grants to do a little bit more there.
Yep.
As time comes by. Sidewalks are pretty big right now, as you guys have probably seen driving around the village, there's a lot of sidewalks everywhere you go are going in, which is really-
Going in, gotta get them in before school starts, right?
Yep, exactly.
Hurry.
Before the ground freezes.
Right.
Anything else?
Dare I ask, what are the next steps on the, the new ordinance for the animal?
There's a subcommittee that's still going back and forth on the ordinance, I believe that's going to come before us, so is it the next meeting? That's when it's supposed to come before us?
I can fill in.
And the two proposals will come at that time?
That's the plan, unless it's changed.
Nope, no, no change, but I'll fill in, I'll fill in some more details for you.
Okay.
Keep Andy in the hot seat.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administration, any comments?
All right, well, that perfect segue, right? So, yeah, so the animal ordinance subcommittee has met four times, I think it is, they have, there are two drafts, there's a yes draft, yes, allow it, there is a no prohibit it. We are internally, administration is working to make sure that we've got all of the comments, you know, incorporated into those, into those drafts and the appropriate locations, and trying to put together a solid report for Village Council to have as they deliberate, right? I'm cautiously optimistic that it will be on their upcoming agenda on the nineteenth. I don't know if the village manager has made a final determination on that yet or not, but at least that's my plan, so we'll see if it goes the way my plan is going. But if that's the case, then it would be first reading on the nineteenth with a second reading in early September. And we'll, we'll see, we'll see how Village Council choose to, chooses to act. I don't, honestly, I don't know.
So they're not the ultimate arbitrator, they can, the council can decide to put it to a public vote or something like that?
Yep, I mean, they could, they could, they're, the options are, I mean, they're not endless, but, I mean, they're, it kind of feels like endless, because, yeah, it takes, there's a lot of, a lot of chicken conversation. But they could, you know, they could choose to adopt one of those ordinances. They could choose to adopt an ordinance and say, and still say, all right, this is, this is going to be the ordinance for now, but, you know, we, we want to put this to a vote, and, you know, the next, the next election cycle is next year, so there are myriad options.
The issue I have with elections is, all of us sitting here, you know, being in the Detroit area, you know, they put casinos to a bout, right?
Right.
First time, no, okay? End of story, no. Had to bring it up a third, second time.
Right.
Second time, no. Thought it was the end of the story, no, brought it up a third time, yes, by just this much. Now it's the law of the land.
Right, right.
You can't, you know, so it, it seems like, you know, my, my opinion, it's something that the council could handle, right? As opposed to public, you know, voting, because then it's, you know, then it's up for, it's something that we vote on every cycle.
Right.
Right.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
We do it once, we're going to do it again, we're going to do it again.
Yeah, and that, that'll be, that's one of the, that's one of the tough decisions that they will, that they'll be facing, right, in terms of what to do, right? Personally, I'm looking forward to, to, no. I'm looking forward to tackling some other ordinances, not just animals or chickens or lizards or, you know, whatever, as much as I want my, my comfort Komodo dragon, I do want to move on to something else, right? So, but we're, we're working through that. We are working on, hopefully, well, there's a second reading on fence ordinance coming up at that meeting. Wenbrook, there's a second reading, reading on the rezoning coming, it's going to be the Susie Show if anybody's interested, I hope you're ready for this. It's like all my stuff.
How are we doing on open seats on any of the boards and commissions? Are we, are we covered now?
There is one for planning.
Really?
One for planning. Unfortunately, one of our planning commissioners just wasn't in a position to fulfill the remainder of her term, and she resigned just, just after the last round of appointments were made. But otherwise, we are, we're full. This committee is full. I am, we are going to have a meeting in September. I am looking into getting the advanced ZBA training, so like the second one that we, that we had, or the follow-up, I should say, to the one we had last August. And I'll, I'll be looking into that a little bit more with dates and whatnot, but otherwise, we're plugging along. I think that's everything I have, well, no, not everything. Happy birthday, well done.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Clarissa, do you have anything to, you need to add? Nope. That is it from us. Any comments from the board? Well, thank you all for your support this evening.
You did great.
And would, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five zoning board of appeals meeting is over.